And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties.
As a member of the Board of Education.
As a member of the Board of Education.
Of the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District, Ohio.
Of the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District, Cuyahoga County, Ohio.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in accordance with the laws now in effect.
And in accordance with the laws now in effect.
And hereafter to be enacted.
And hereafter to be enacted.
During my continuance in said office.
During my continuance in said office.
And until my successor is elected and qualified.
And until my successor is elected and qualified.
Congratulations. I Molly Lewis.
I Molly Lewis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties.
As a member of the Board of Education.
As a member of the Board of Education.
Of the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District, Cuyahoga County, Ohio.
Of the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District, Cuyahoga County, Ohio.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in accordance with the laws now in effect.
And in accordance with the laws now in effect.
And hereafter to be enacted.
And hereafter to be enacted.
During my continuance in said office.
During my continuance in said office.
And until my successor is elected and qualified.
And until my successor is elected and qualified.
Congratulations. I Jody Serini.
I Jody Serini.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties.
As a member of the Board of Education.
As a member of the Board of Education.
Of the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District, Cuyahoga County, Ohio.
Of the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District, Cuyahoga County, Ohio.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in accordance with the laws now in effect.
And in accordance with the laws now in effect.
And hereafter to be enacted.
And hereafter to be enacted.
During my continuance in said office.
During my continuance in said office.
And until my successor is elected and qualified.
And until my successor is elected and qualified.
Congratulations.
So the first thing we need to do is we need to call the roll. Ms. Wright.
Here.
Mr. Posh.
Here.
Mr. Heinz.
Here.
Ms. Serini.
Here.
Ms. Lewis.
Here.
We have some elected officials in the audience. And we just had some people get sworn in. I think we need to take some pictures. We all game? And then we're gonna move on to some business after that, which hopefully's not gonna be too boring. But I think after the pictures are done, there's, you're free to do what you have to do. You really don't have to stick through it. Are we, are we good with that? Uh, you introduce the, um, the elected officials. So, we have from Cleveland Heights, uh, Mayor Carol Rowe. Vice Mayor Melissa Yasnov. Why, why don't you guys come up? From, and we have some council members. Uh, from University Heights, we have Mayor Michael Brennan. You wanna, you wanna come up? Uh, council members, um, Mary Dunbar. Mike Unger. Uh, Sue Pardee from University Heights. Vice Mayor.
Yep.
And I have hopefully gotten everybody. I don't know. Scott, Scott's our picture person. Why don't we come up here? You guys step on the top. So, um, we need a leader. Or is there a nomination for President of the Board?
I move to nominate Jim Posh for President of the Board.
I would like to second that.
Is there any discussion? Gary, there's no discussion.
I can make a comment. Do we need to speak into these tonight, or?
It just picks up.
It just picks up, okay. I think you're the right person to do it. I think it would be important for us to have somebody who has been on the Board. We're all pretty new, and so I would support that. I think it's the right thing to do for the Board.
Okay, so as I called the roll, each person just states the name of the person that they choose. So the President, Vice President election's a little different, so, um, I'll, uh, call your name and you simply state the name of the, of the person you choose for President from the nominees. Uh, Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Mr. Posh.
Mr. Posh.
Um, Mr. Posh.
Mr. Heinz.
Mr. Posh.
Ms. Serini.
Mr. Posh.
Ms. Lewis.
Mr. Posh.
Congratulations, Mr. Posh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I'm a little terrified. I've been on this board for, um, two years. When I ran, it was not my expectation or thoughts to ever be here. Um, but I'm honored, and I really hope I make you guys proud. We need a Vice President. Do we have a nomination for Vice President?
Yes, um, I would be honored to nominate Jody Serini as our Vice President. I have spent quite a few months getting to know Jody, and I will tell you unequivocally, she has dedication to this, uh, community, to our schools. She is a wonderful voice. She is a University Heights resident, but she speaks with conviction for the entire community, both communities, all three communities. She is extremely well organized. She is detail-oriented, but she does also, also does not lose sight of the big picture. These are qualities that I've learned about her and have come to admire a great deal, and I think that she will be, uh, an excellent, um, Vice President.
Any other comments? I'd, I'd like to make one if nobody else has anything.
We got a second on the motion.
That we don't need a second.
Oh, okay.
Just any other nominations.
Well, we obviously have three new Board Members that are very strong-willed folks. They ran great campaigns. They got great ideas. I think it's a good idea to have one of these folks as the Vice President. It's sort of a new era a little bit, um, continuing, continuing on a lot of the great work that we're doing. I would like to see Jody as our President, or Vice President. Yes, I'd actually like Jody as the President. Any other comments? Take a vote. Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Ms. Serini. Mr. Posh.
I, Ms. Serini.
Mr. Heinz.
Ms. Serini.
Ms. Serini.
Ms. Serini.
Ms. Lewis.
Ms. Serini.
Congratulations. So now we have to elect the Secretary Pro Temp. Do we have a nomination for Secretary Pro Temp?
I would like to nominate Beverly Wright for Secretary Pro Temp.
You do need a second. It's a traditional vote.
And you need a second?
Yeah.
For this one? We need a second?
I second that.
Any comments?
I think that, um, uh, Ms. Wright's service on the Board for the past two years has certainly, um, given her the experience. She's seen this job again. We don't have a whole lot of experience on the Board right now, so we need to, uh, you know, really leverage what we have to the best of, of, uh, what we can, and I would appreciate it very much if she would accept the job.
Thank you. Yes.
Any other comments? Did you call the roll? Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Ms. Wright.
Mr. Heinz.
Ms. Wright.
Ms. Serini.
Ms. Wright.
Ms. Lewis.
Ms. Wright.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
So we work with the consent agenda, and there's a number of remaining operational things that are available on Board Docs. This is our electronic media meeting manager. Everybody has access to it. If you have electronic device, you can look at this beforehand. We get these agendas in advance. Part of our homework assignments is to re, is to review all these things. You will not see a lot of discussion on a lot of these root, routine items. As a matter of transparency, you could go at chuh.org, go under Board, go under Board Docs, and you can see all the votes, all the information. You can, you can go there now and see all this information. But we've got a consent agenda, and so we have a, a resolution. Be it resolved that the Cleveland Heights University Heights Board of Education approve the consent agenda for the organizational meeting items 1 through 13 in routine business. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jim.
We need the first.
I think I need to pull one thing out on that and vote separately on it.
This is the organizational.
Oh, this is, okay, alright, alright.
This is still the organizational.
Yeah, I think there's an issue regarding a donation. You want to pull that on the, on the separate, on the other meeting.
Okay, so we're still in the organizational meeting.
Right, the regular meeting.
Correct. So the first on that was made by?
I would so motion if I can.
Any discussion?
I do have a couple of questions. I seem to have lost all the notes which I put into Board Docs when my computer was sitting at home.
Who?
Because now I'm here and it's all gone. Um, so from memory, um, I had a couple of questions about petty cash, and I wanted to know if that was reconciled on a fiscal year, calendar year?
This one.
Monthly? Okay, so the amounts that were in there, do we approve that rollover now because it's rolling over from last month, or because it's rolling over from?
It, you're approving it on a calendar basis because it's required as part of the organizational meeting, but the actual accounting of it is done on a fiscal year basis.
Okay, thank you. Um, now can I remember my other questions?
Minute to just kinda go through the agenda?
Sure.
Yeah, if there are any other questions on those organizational items. Um, they tend to be the procedural types, so your mileage, um, dates and times of regular meetings, membership in OSBA, uh, in the OAPI, uh, blanket purchase orders, those kinds of things. Most of these are statutorily required to be approved in your organizational meeting.
I guess my last question was, and this is mostly for clarity for the community who pays taxes, and that was, um, you know, we're resolving to pay the Board of Education members the maximum amount allowed by the State of Ohio, and I have no idea what that amount is, and I think perhaps people would be interested to know that.
Absolutely. Yes, so that is $125 per meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Any other? Any other comments?
That's it.
Wanna call a vote? Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
So we need to adjourn this meeting and start our regular meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
You don't need a, you can just roll from one.
Rolls?
Yeah.
So we're done with this one?
Mm-hmm.
So this is, this is the time where if you folks have been here to, um, you know, witness that, everybody gets sworn in and everything, um, you don't need to stick around. This is where it gets a little dry. It's interesting to some of us, which is why we're here. Feel free to stay. But you certainly don't need to, you, you don't need to be here. And if you wanna go online and watch the videos to see what happens afterwards, you're more than welcome. Do we have any statements from the audience this?
Good question.
Yeah, I guess.
State your name. We generally put limits on these if they get out of hand, but please don't have to ask us to do that.
Do you need my address as well?
Don't believe so.
My name is Mark Harris. I'm a Cleveland Heights resident. I am the President of the newly chartered Kiwanis of the Heights. Uh, some of you may know, some time ago, we had a Kiwanis chapter that helped support the schools. That chapter aged out. In the past couple of months, we've been working on developing membership, and now we're at the point that we're able to be chartered by Kiwanis, and our general message is we're here to help. We'll be holding fundraisers continuously. We will be building clubs, the K Club at the high school, Builders Clubs at the middle schools, hopefully K Clubs at the elementary schools. Our purpose there is to develop our student body, to have a sense of volunteerism, a sense of leadership, and a sense of civic responsibility. So I just wanted to introduce myself tonight. I hope to reach out to all of you, give you a broader perspective of what we're doing, and as you have needs, I hope that you bring them to me and we're able to accommodate them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have some recognitions.
Good evening, everyone. So January is the School Board Recognition Month. So during this month, Board Members across the nation are acknowledged for the tireless work that they do on behalf of their students of their school districts and the community. So our Board had a great task before them in 2017. They accepted each challenge enthusiastically and got at their work by our strategic plan. So on behalf of the Ohio School Board Association, I want to salute our former School Board Members, and one of them is here, Ron Register, Eric Silverman, and Cal Zucker, along with our Continuing Board Members, Jim Posh and Beverly Wright. And so if you will come forward, we have a certificate for you, please.
Ron thought he was done.
Okay, Ron says, "Come on, Beverly."
Get up there, Ron.
He would've dressed up if he did.
Okay. So the Tiger Team Members of the Month. So tonight, we also have the opportunity to once again recognize a number of CHUH staff members who are going above and beyond to create a culture of excellence in our school district. Tonight, I want to honor the Tiger Team Members of the Month for December. Each honoree was nominated by a colleague, and in many cases, multiple colleagues. We received 70 new nominations in December, bringing our total for the year to 162 nominations since we started this effort. We have several of the chosen December honorees with us tonight, so when I read your name, please come forward. From Heights High, Adaptive Physical Education Teacher Karen Blair. From the Delaw Option Center, Interim Site Supervisor Claude Holland. Come on forward. From Monticello at Heights Middle School, we have School Counselor Ann Bradley. From the Roxborough at Heights Middle School, we have Technology and Multimedia Teacher Amy Staudler. From Boulevard Elementary, we have School Counselor Betsy Race. From Canterbury Elementary School, we have Administrative Assistant Brenda Gatkowski. From Fairfax Elementary School, we have Art Teacher Jessica Friedland. From Garrity Professional Development School, we have Cleaner Vivian Colston. From Nobre Elementary, First Grade Teacher Tracy Terrell. From Oxford Elementary, Teacher and Interim School Administrator Patrick Carpenter. From Roxborough Elementary School, Principal Shelley Pulling. And from the Board of Education, Coordinated Student Services Erin Hannah. And congratulations to all of our honorees, and thank you for your efforts to promoting a culture of excellence for Cleveland Heights University Heights School District. Let's give them all a hand.
Oh, maybe that's why.
Thank you.
Okay. Can you send back this way the piece of paper, the log in and password, to see if I can get back into it?
Alrighty. Oh, was it this thing? That's the, are you taking off?
Yeah. And it was good, because I put a little yellow thing on the agenda showing my notes. And I had a whole parcel of them unresolved.
And then we asked some, can you pass that to Monica? Right. Yeah, but then we need to call someone to, someone second sit then.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to our consent agenda. Be it resolved that the Cleveland Heights University Heights, uh, Board of Education approve the consent agenda, which includes items in the following categories: Meeting Minutes, Personnel, Educational Services, Business Services, just item number two, and Finance. Do I have a second? No, I need someone to make a motion.
I will so motion.
Second.
Are there any discussion? Thoughts, comments? Or Jody, you saw some errors in the minutes?
Yeah, I saw an error in the date in a minute that I asked to be corrected, and then there was a typo in, uh, dollar amount that I asked to be corrected as well.
And they were, thank you.
There was a missing zero.
Yeah.
Is that the 300, 3,000?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Because they can't hear you back.
Okay.
Put your mics up to you.
Alright, put your mic up. Sorry.
Well, I've now lost Board Docs, 'cause I'm a fool.
Yeah, so there were two items that I had sent a note ahead of time to correct. One was a date in the minutes, and one was a, uh, missing zero in a number. And those have been corrected.
Those have been corrected?
Yes, yes.
Great.
Those have been corrected.
There's no other discussion? Can you call the vote? Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the following donations under, uh, G Business Services, item number one?
So moved.
Second.
There any discussion?
Jim, I just wanna make a point that the reason that this item was separated out is because I need to remove myself because one of the donations I made, and I made it before I was elected to office, but it's now just hitting the agenda. So I felt that I needed to pull that out so I can abstain from the vote.
And I see we have a very generous donation from one of our members, Alan Wilkinson, who's pretty much a loyal School Board meeting watcher. Thank you, Alan, for coming to our meetings and for your donation.
And I also noticed that last month, there was a previous donation by the same person, Rachel Andrews, and I thought that was very generous as well.
There's no other comments? Would you please call the vote? Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Dane.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
So we have the Board's President Re, President's Report. So I think, oh, Superintendent's Report?
Yes.
We do have a Superintendent's Report before the Board President's Report.
Thank you. So I just have a, uh, just a short comment. Again, Happy New Year and welcome back. Uh, we have a lot of exciting things happening this year, and glad to have the new Board Members, um, with us to share this excitement as we continue to focus on our strategic plan goals and doing what's best for the students of our community. Thank you from Mark Harris who left, um, and I was honored to be one of the charter members for the Kiwanis of the Heights, so it's exciting. We had our, uh, a big meeting last week, and they are so eager to help with our schools. So there's a, a meeting we have, and, um, there'll be upcoming meeting, and we're, um, excited about the work that they're gonna do. There's a lot of exciting work that they've done in the district in the past, so, um, to be able to partner with them again is exciting for the students in, in, in our community. So next week, I would be out, um, presenting, um, with the National Superintendent's Roundtable in the Horace Mann League. Um, I'll actually be on stage with, um, with the President of American Federation of Teachers and some others, and we're talking about the NAEP results. So I'll be representing the school district at that in Washington DC. There's a report, I'll make sure I have it. It's still embargoed until the 17th, but, um, it's sort of being your Board package, uh, this weekend. But we're talking about the Common Core Assessments and the NAEP Benchmarks, and this report will be released on the 17th, and I'll make sure that you have that. So I'll be representing the district next week.
Can you tell us what NAEP stands for, please?
Oh, thank you. So it, the acronym is the National Assessment of Educational Progress.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for catching me on that, as you speak. So, um, excited to represent the district at that. Also, I want to give you, we have an opportunity on January 29th with, it's a Democracy in Education Series. Many of you probably have received this. I'm sorry if I'm not speaking loudly enough. The Heights Coalition for Public Education. And it's their flyer. So on the 29th, um, they're titled, it's Superintendent's Fight Back. So- So, I would be presenting along with Jim Lloyd of Olmstead Falls Schools and Walter Davis of Witworth Schools. So, we will be presenting, and you will have this in your board packet. But the Heights Coalition for Public Education has been doing some powerful work, and we definitely want you to come out and support those efforts on that, and I think Jim may speak to that during his, during his report. And lastly, and I know when we get to Scott, Scott is going to talk about his, the CAFR, but I want to give shout-outs to our students who participate in the artwork that's in this CAFR, are comprehensive, and will finance report, this Scott, I'm sure, is going to speak to. But the artwork, when you look in here, is fabulous of all our students, elementary, middle, and our high school participated in artwork that's in here. So, I just wanted to publicly give them recognition for the work that they've done. And that's it for my Superintendent's Report.
The Treasurers' Report?
So, we have just a couple of things here. One being that we do have the five-year forecast for approval, and it's now been moved out of the consent agenda at the Board's request. Two, it will be an action item under the Treasurers' Report. You'll remember that the five-year forecast statutorily has to be approved in October and in May, but because it is such an important document and is really kind of a guideline for us and a planning tool, the Board asked, and I think it was specifically Mr. Posh, that we have the Board approve it every month. So, although there are many months when, unless there's some kind of a material change to the five-year forecast, we're still bringing it to you every month just to keep it front and center. So, in this case, this five-year forecast is, is the same one that was approved back in December. The December forecast, you'll remember, you know, had, had to do with the Kaiser settlement, with some other things. I recall that all the new board members, I think, were in attendance when the Board approved that. So, this is strictly the same forecast, but again, being brought to you and approved, or asking for your approval here in January as well. A couple of other quick items before we get there, too, and ask for your approval of that. Over break, we did complete the audit for fiscal year ending June 30th, '17, so that is an annual audit that the Auditor of State performs. They review the financial statements, internal controls, compliance, all that good stuff. They come in July-ish, and they don't leave until December. So, they do a lot of testing, and so we did receive an unqualified or clean opinion, audit opinion, which kind of you'll see, because it goes in conjunction with the comprehensive annual financial report that the Superintendent mentioned, the Auditor of State opinion is contained in here. But we do have the CAFR here. You have a print copy available for all of you. There are a few print copies in my office, and as of today, thank you, Mr. Wortman, we're online with the, with the CAFR for 2016, 2017. A lot of people do, there's a lot of hard work that goes into this, and so, yes, the students in particular, we do like to showcase some of their artwork in here. At least it makes it, it breaks up the numbers a little bit, so people are, you know, actually will take a look at the document. But this is the 17th year that we've done the CAFR. As I said, the Auditor of State opinion is included. We have submitted it to GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, and the Association of School Business Officials for awards consideration, and as I mentioned, it is on the website as well. So, as you review this document, if you have any questions, please feel free to contact me at any time with, I'd be happy to discuss it with you. And the last thing I want to mention is, you'll recall that we were refunding some bonds right before the end of the fiscal year, so additionally over break. Everything happened all at the end of, end of the calendar year. December 28th, we did close the bond refunding. We had our call with Moody's, we maintained our AA3 bond rating. They attribute that primarily to solid local support and healthy but diminished cash reserves. They, we sold $60.7 million worth of bonds of the $134.8 million that we originally issued back in 2014. The team that helped us with that, from Squire Patton Boggs, our bond counsel, was Kathy Petrie, and from Stiefel Nicholas, our underwriter, was Al Baco. And overall, we saved $4.9 million over the life of the bond. So, you know, in an attempt to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars, and, and the timing was, as we mentioned before, because of the new federal tax law that was prohibiting districts from doing these advanced bond refunding, which really is like refinancing your home mortgage and trying to take advantage of better interest rates. So, we, we did that while we were able to, and again, saved just under $5 million in interest over the life of the bond. So, we were, we were happy to make that happen as well.
And what is the life of the bond that we refinanced?
They continue through 2051. So, and actually, the breakdown, we saved about $1 million in interest for 18, $791,000 for bonds, because they, they are staggered, these bonds, from 19 through 22, and then it's about, so we front-loaded the interest savings.
Okay.
And then about $27,000 per year from 2023 to 2051.
You should clarify, this doesn't mean we have another $4 million to spend.
That is correct. Because the, yes, that was a question we got right up front, was, okay, do we have almost $5 million that we can now put into the project? Really, what this does is, it just requires us, we don't necessarily need to assess that interest from the taxpayers to pay the debt. So, it's not money that we would ever see, but it is a savings to the taxpayers for the, for the bonds that, that's really when, when a bond issue like that's voted, it's not necessarily a firm millage, it's really whatever amount of millage is necessary to pay the debt on an annual basis. So, now, because we have less interest to pay, we're able to adjust the millage down as we go. So, that was that. So, it was a productive, productive break.
Thank you.
Scott, can I ask?
Yes, sir.
One of the things that we are facing a great deal of is the Ed Choice money that is removed from our budget. And it's important to me, I think, that we remind the community and each other regularly about the impact of Ed Choice on our schools. So, can you give us a brief overview of the fiscal impact of Ed Choice on our schools and on the taxpayers? Because it's ultimately the taxpayers that are supporting us and are having this money taken away from the public schools that they generously support.
Good, good point. And, and actually, you'll see in the, in the five-year forecast, which is a, is an attachment to your documents in board docs, that, again, another request, after a request of the Board, was that we actually break out both our community school deduction, the Ed Choice voucher deduction, and the Peterson Autism Scholarship vouchers. So, you're going to see those at the bottom half of your five-year forecast as a separate line item, so that we can demonstrate to the community the amount of dollars that are being used or diverted from our district to these other options. So, the community school deduction you'll see from 2015 forward remains around $3 million. That's pretty static number. The Ed Choice vouchers, significant increases over the course of time from $337,000 in 2015 up to a projected $6 million in 2022. So, for the current year budgeted Ed Choice vouchers, we're going to lose about $3 million. And then the Peterson Autism voucher deduction similarly is increasing. So, you're seeing it was previously about $1 million, we're at $2.38 million, and then that's leveling out there. So, all told, we have three, $6.78, $9 million in vouchers that are leaving the district on an annual basis. Six, or eight and a half or so. So, yes, that, so I know that's something that's, that's certainly a concern of the district. I know that the first ring superintendents, as well as the first ring treasurers, have, have been having conversations about how we can address that issue and try to bring some conversation to the state level. You know, in some cases, it affects some districts more than others, certainly for us, because of the number of non-public and private school options we have in the, in the area. We have a significant Ed Choice voucher diversion of funds. But, you know, I know there's some other districts that are hard hit by that as well, particularly Euclid. I'm thinking of the inner ring suburbs have, have a big issue with the Ed Choice vouchers as well. So, so that's something you'll continue to hear about, and we will bring it up regularly at your request, absolutely.
Thank you.
Could you explain why fiscal '17 Medicaid went to zero?
Fiscal Medicaid, yes, that was...
That's a huge change year over year, and I'm wondering what that's about.
Yeah, those ended up being, those are all timing issues of when those Medicaid reimbursements come in. So, it traditionally is around a half a million dollars. So, you'll see that in '15, there wasn't much at all.
Right.
And then in '16, we actually received 15s and 17s. It, it's just, it's the way that the timing of the reimbursement flows.
Okay.
So, overall, if you level that out, it's about a half a million dollars a year. Yeah.
And then another question, can you tell me what the encumbrances of $2,900,000 were?
Mm-hmm. So, just an explanation of encumbrances in general?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, in, so, any purchase order that is made in a fiscal year is an obligation that, you know, a lot of times, at the end of the fiscal year, it's a timing issue, or these blanket purchase orders that we'll have, that may, may be, you know, $5,000 to a vendor for whatever reason. And over the course, we'll release dollars against that at the end of the fiscal year. There may be some commitments still encumbered, but not necessarily invoiced.
So, the, that's money that's owed, but hasn't actually been paid out yet?
Correct. And so, that would, you know, that number, that $2.9 million actually would be across all those expenditure category, well, not salary and benefits, but over, it could be some tuition. And actually, if you, if you want to see a breakdown of those, you know, we, we can pull that up for you to, to show exactly what categories those encumbrances are in. But it's primarily some tuition, material supplies, it could be a textbook, a lot of utilities or blanket purchase orders that will be over the course of years and get invoiced periodically.
Now, once those encumbrances have been actually paid out, do they go back to the fiscal year in which they were encumbered, or do they post to the fiscal year where they are actually paid?
We are cash basis, so they would post to the, but we have to track them because the only time that we go to a GAAP basis, as for the comprehensive annual financial report, we have to report GAAP basis for that, which would be, but, but otherwise, all, all school districts are operating on a cash basis. So, those encumbrances, although we need to know what they are and report them as such, the, it, when the dollars actually leave us, that's when the expense gets recorded.
Okay, thank you.
And so, we kind of pull that out all at once here and, and assume that all purchase orders will be liquidated and that those obligations will be met. But oftentimes, the end of those purchase orders may not be completely paid out for whatever reason. It could be an estimate that, you know, some service wasn't provided, we'll close those out, and then that amount could be less. So, that's kind of a conservative estimate of what could be paid out.
Until you get your final numbers.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just to spin off something that Mollya mentioned, the Medicaid reimbursements, just in terms of, of educating other folks, the Medicaid reimbursements, and you can extend upon this, I'm sure, much further than I can go, but those come as a result of services that we provide, such as special education, occupational, speech therapy, occupational therapy, that sort of thing. It's some of those services that we are required to deliver to our students. They're, for some of those students, they, we are eligible to be reimbursed from Medicaid.
Correct.
Thank you.
And those services change, are changing constantly and, and actually becoming less and less, the amount. So, it's a lot of, a lot of work on, on districts' parts to track that and to get that reimbursement.
And actually, at $500,000, my hunch would be that when you take into consideration the software program that is, that is required for us to buy a license to use, and then the employee time entering all of the data, I, I would challenge whether or not we're breaking even at that $500,000.
Yeah, and it, and it used to be significantly more money than, you know, that's, that's dropped over the years. So, back in the day, you know, that number was upwards of $3 million annually.
Right.
And, yeah. It continues to dwindle, so good, good point about the cost benefit there. Could be, we could be at a point where that's not necessarily worth our while.
And Scott, the capital outlay for FY '17, is that about half because we're only halfway through the year? It's about half of every other year, so...
Uh, no.
Why is that significantly lower?
I, I'm going to, without looking at the detail, I'm going to, I'm going to assume, and I can get that answer for you, that, that's, that, that's a significant part of the encumbrances.
Okay.
So, some of that, that money was encumbered and not necessarily spent at the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
Because you'll see that number tends to be fairly close to a million and a half. It fluctuates based on the actual amount of, of outlay, but, yeah.
Okay.
So, I'll get the, I'll, I'll get the breakdown of those encumbrances, so you can see what categories they relate to, just so we have that information available.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, I mean, I had one comment. Oh, sure. And it's mostly about the five-year forecast, and this is, this is a document that I, as a board member, rely on, just, I, I think it's, I think it's one of the most important things that we, as a board member, are able to look at and monitor, and having it available online through board docs for the community to see. This is one page that explains multi-years of our financial health or financial demise. It's the reason why we have to go on the ballot and issue levies in order to just sort of make ends meet. It lays out, for example, the issue regarding the vouchers and how painful that is for us. It's something that we, as a board member, really, really need to keep an eye on, and I'm saying that because there's three board members here, and this is going to be available every month. I mean, we don't need to dig into it every month, but, I mean, I think if there's something that sort of comes across that you don't quite understand, we should discuss it, we should talk about it, we should look at it. I mean, everybody in the community should, should see this. And I know when I was a part of many community efforts to pass school levies, and we go to the elected officials, our council people, our mayors, the first thing I would do is I'd put this piece of paper in front of them, and I'd explain the problem, because in one page, it explains it. It's a very, very effective tool, it's very, very good for you guys to understand this. The vouchers, we need to talk more about that, but I think that's another topic that I'd like to bring up in a minute.
Absolutely. Happy to talk about that.
Any other comments regarding this? We have a motion, we have a second, so it's time for a...
We actually need a motion.
We actually need a motion.
To...
To approve the five-year forecast.
I motion that we approve the five-year forecast.
Second.
So, moved in second. Any further discussion? Would you please call the vote? Ms. Wright?
Yeah.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Now, is it time for the President's Report?
Yes.
We really don't have one. But I think there's a couple of things that we need to work through. One of them is committee assignments, one of them is agendas for future meetings. It doesn't necessarily need, need to be done right now, and I wanted to piggyback on a comment that Mr. Register made in his prior meeting regarding the school district and the library and the Coventry Building. And I just want to comment, we're moving forward with this. We are, our lawyers are working with the library lawyers, there's a due diligence process. We've heard from multiple community members that they would like to see this transaction go through quickly. We are trying to work through that. There's people in the community that are concerned regarding the economic development impact of this. We've had conversations with city officials. We don't think moving with the library impedes any future possible economic development efforts that the city and the library may want to embark on. We think it could be a win-win, frankly, for all three parties as well as the community. But there's a lot of details, there's a lot of things we still have to figure out. We're working toward this as quickly as we can. So just wanted to, just wanted to say. Committee assignments. I have, the only document I was able to find in my records, which was, it's two years da, it's two years old, I passed it out to everybody. This is going to take a little bit of discussion. The most important thing that I think we need to agree on this evening is membership of the Bond Accountability Commission. That meeting is this month.
Which is not on this list.
It is not.
Because it didn't exist at the time.
No, it's not a school board committee. The Bond Accountability Committee, remember, that's my committee. We had the, you guys had it as the fact and that was a board committee.
It was a board committee.
Correct. That's the BAC now, it's-
It's your committee.
It's my committee.
So we had Eric and myself sit on that board ex officio.
Correct.
So we need two board members to do that.
Not necessarily, or we could, we had you and Eric because of your position and helping with the process prior with the meetings when we were meeting with PMC.
Mm-hmm.
So we could keep it as the one board member if we wanted to. I don't see a need that we need to have two board members on that one. I think having, you know, the remainder year on that committee should be fine.
I'm not sure I'm comfortable to remain on the committee.
Okay, so if you want, okay, so maybe you want to switch and maybe we can talk about if you may switch and have another board member instead of the two?
Well, I think, I think one of the issues is that committee, either through a board member or through the committee itself, is coming back and making, you know, recommendations-
Correct.
-to both staff and to the board. And we're ultimately voting on those recommendations. And we have questions as we sort of, you know, I know I've got questions when, when I see. And you guys do a pretty good job-
Right.
-responding to those. But still, the whole process of how those, you know, how those questions flow and how the, and how they get answered is still a little uncertain to me.
Right.
I'm not asking for an answer now.
Right.
But I think we need to sort of figure out then. It's easy if we have multiple members from this board who can either ask those questions through us or be a part of it. Maybe this is an issue that, I mean, we are having a board retreat where I thought we'd, we as a board would be able to talk a little bit more about the committees between now and then.
Right. I think it'd be great to talk about those meetings there because we added the new policy committee, that we would definitely need a board member on that one, that's going to be working with Dr. Lombardo and the team with developing and looking at policies, so that is the new committee. The BAC, I would, yes, I think we need some more conversation about that because part of that committee is to be the, the eyes and ears of the community as well. And they are just another vetting process. So we have a number of staff members there and board members, and we did receive some feedback that it, that we had so many staff and so many board members from the laypeople. And so maybe we need to formalize so that it's not intimidating for the laypeople who are on the committee, that they can make, you know, some reasonable recommendations to the board without being influenced by the board or by even me as superintendent being on the committee and the other staff that's on it. But I agree, we should have a board member on the committee, I think that's good, but maybe we could talk about maybe not having a board member and having the committee make their recommendations to the board is something that we can think through too. But that committee is not only going to work on managing the master facilities plan, but they're also going to work on what the permanent improvement funds are as well. So there's a lot of vetting, a lot of recommendations that they're going to make to the board regarding next steps that we should take on spending dollars. So maybe next Saturday would be opportunity, but I think we have a meeting before next Saturday. I think we have a-
The BAC meeting on Thursday, doesn't it?
Yeah, yep, yep. And they're going to be, actually, I think we decided to divide the group up and they're going to be prioritizing some recommendations to the board about what should get done in both of our middle schools.
So there is a meeting on the seventeenth for the Bond Accountability.
Correct.
This board needs to make some decisions regarding, I'm at a loss for the word.
Alternates.
Alternates, thank you.
I can read your minds, Jim.
Excellent. The alternates. When is that decision going to be happening?
According to Doug, I believe, and George is not here, George had to leave, he has pink eye, so he is-
Oh, no, poor man.
Yes, yes, he found out around four o'clock, so we sent him home. We believe in February or March, so it's still time for the BAC to work on vetting those priorities and making the decision to say, you know, we have our permanent improvement dollars, do we want to pay for some of those items in permanent improvement dollars? Do we want to prioritize those dollars? Or do we want to use those things out of the money that's remaining from, from the bond? So that is the work of that team. So if you would like, a couple of you want to join the meeting on the seventeenth to kind of see and hear-
Yeah, I would like to be there if possible.
What's happening, I think that's, oh, yes, mhm, I think that's possible, that's the more than happy to come.
Okay.
And it's a new committee, they're working differently than the committee did before. You know, just as a reminder, when there was the, the fact, I wasn't a part of it because it was a board committee. So I wasn't a part of it, so I've never attended one. So this one, we wanted to bring, we wanted to become a part of the superintendent's work so that we can have more direction of the committee. And then the committee is going to report to the board, report out to the board, their findings, their thoughts about the prioritization, prioritization of items and where those monies are. Because currently, we do not report out our permanent improvement dollars. So we have those dollars, but we've not reported out to the community how we're using those dollars and how we're prioritizing the, the work that we're doing in the district when it comes to roofs and all those maintenance issues.
Right.
So we wanted, I wanted back to help facilitate that too. So it shows the level of accountability and it shows that we are vetting these things through experts who are in the community. And the members of that team are the, some very talented people in the community who are working with that.
Will George Petkak be at the meeting on Thursday?
Oh, yes. He's there and also Doug Myers from PMC.
Okay.
And his assistant, Mary, is the secretary there.
No, I just ask about George because obviously, he's the one who's aware of ongoing maintenance issues-
Oh, yes.
And where PI funds-
Exactly.
-would best be allocated.
Yep.
That's his purview.
Well, prior, it was George and I making decisions and we just didn't feel comfortable keep doing that. We have so many experts and we wanted to broaden that opportunity and have some other people help in making that decision and prioritizing those needs. Especially now, since we will have less money for our middle school facilities and we want to make sure if we have an opportunity for some alternates, then what can we utilize our permanent improvement dollars for so that we can use the alternates for things that we know that we cannot use permanent improvement dollars for?
Right.
Does that make sense?
So it's a way of maximizing what we get total-
Exactly.
-out of the project.
Correct. Without just the district people making the decision, but we have another group of people who are making recommendations to us. And I thought that's, that's the purpose of, of that group.
Well, I mean, I think we have to remember from day one, when this whole project, you know, phase one started, was to try to use less permanent improvement money. That's why we went out to the voters and, and looked for this, this bond. These two things are totally intertwined. The fact that you're bringing that to the forefront right now, I think is a great idea. I think it's very, very helpful for us to balance. I mean, whether we're paying for a roof or a fire suppression system out of one or the other, it's, it's still money that's, it's still coming out of a pot of money that we have to be either held accountable for-
Exactly.
But it impacts our kids.
Right.
And, you know, you know, for me, that's, you know, impacts the kids, we need to figure this out.
Correct.
So.
Right.
So for the meeting on the seventeenth.
I will be there.
You'll be there.
Yes, good.
And I think if there's interest from other parties, why don't you talk to Talisa about attending that meeting?
Yeah.
And then we can, you know, you know, or get feedback from Malia-
Yeah.
-on how, on how it goes.
Okay.
I mean, we've had some email exchanges back and forth, you know, discussion, just questions.
Yeah, right.
I am still very concerned about the policy on how decisions are getting made to prioritize items. I'd love to have some more information on that.
Right. And we don't have a policy around the decision-making, so we don't, there's nothing in writing, there's no policy. And we do have, we have Brad there, Scott Warpin and Scott Gaynor on the team as well. So this would be new to us on, we're going to lay out at that meeting what that will look like. What would the decision-making process look like for this? Because this would be the first time this team will be making some recommendations to the board. So we're not making, they're not making decisions. The goal is for them to make recommendations for the board for consideration. And they understand that and they understand that role and they have the expertise to help us make those decisions because of their, their backgrounds. So we've not made any decision on how the decision-making process will go.
So that's the seventeenth?
Yes.
And what, what time? It's right in front of me, probably?
No, no. I have to learn all the right buttons.
But I'm looking at the notice here now. We didn't, and we did notice it, by the way. So the BAC is six PM on the seventeenth here at the board. So Dan, can I, can I put you on the hot speed for a sec? I mean, one of the things that I think we've all done as individuals is we've sort of reached out to everybody as individuals and we've sort of heard what was said during the campaign trail.
Yes.
You shared with me one of the things regarding the building project.
Yeah. You know, I, running for public office was an amazing experience that I enjoyed a great deal. And it was something entirely new to me. And when you stand outside of the public library and you walk up to complete strangers and introduce yourself and ask them to sign a petition to put you on the ballot or you knock on people's doors to introduce yourselves, yourself, you get a pretty good sense of the community's sense of the schools. And it was a wonderful experience for me. And one of the things that came very clearly through was a desire among our neighbors to have the board, what I call lean in to the construction project and to become more engaged. People, my sense was that people overall were extremely pleased with the final product of the new, newly renovated Cleveland Heights High School. But they were concerned about the financial end of it. And they really wanted the board to become more engaged in that process. I heard this dozens of times in different sets of words, walk, knocking on lots of doors throughout the community. And at the last board meeting, there was a discussion of a policy shift that increased the amount that our, that George could spend without the issue coming before the board. And that discussion, I wish that, I wish that I had been there, I had just broken my leg, I wish that I had been there to, to talk with folks outside, only because I think that, that the decision that was made to increase George's allocation that he, that he can allocate was really the opposite of the message that I was hearing from so many of my neighbors. Has nothing to do with George. I want to say that again, has nothing to do with George. People are not saying necessarily that the decisions that are being made are wrong or ill-advised, they just want the board more involved. And so, you know, that decision, I think, could be revisited. And I, I really feel that I owe it to all of those neighbors who I spoke to about this topic to bring it up, that it would not be right for me to have all of those discussions on people's front stoops and outside of the library and for me to, so many times, listen to them and hear their desires. And I just think that this is something that the board needs to continue to, to discuss.
If, if I may, I think that's good. I think people definitely want to be heard and it's great that you were listening to our constituents. But I want to remind everyone that when the board decided to do a project of this magnitude, the model that they chose, that, you know, the construction manager at risk, I think they chose that model because of their, they didn't believe they had the expertise. It wasn't their wheelhouse, wasn't our wheelhouse. And they relied on this model to help steer the ship sort of and make those decisions. I understand that there were a lot of concerns, it was our first time in this project, you know, we spent a lot of money, yes. But I don't want, I want to make sure that we don't try to, try to manage too closely that particular work. There's a lot of work for us to do and get involved in when we think about our goals that are here, that Scott makes sure reposted, and when we're thinking about our student outcomes and educational approach. I mean, our main core business is that, yes, we have to show that we're fiscally solvent and that we're doing our due diligence, we want to make sure we're doing that. Those efforts was just so that we're not stopping the work. We've always brought those things before the board. The high school project was different because a lot of decisions that we were making that came before the board were really decisions after the fact. You know, there were some projects had moved forward and we're going to, and they were bringing those. And, and I think we can, you know, we understood that there were some mistakes made, that we needed to correct those mistakes. This project is very different, we know how much money that we have. We don't want the project to be, to stop because we may need a decision made and we may not have a board meeting until the next two weeks or the next thirty days. And if we have to make those decisions, then how would, and the project can't keep going, then what as a board are we going to do to, to, to stop that from happening? Because right now, if we're saying that George does not get the ability, the authorization to move forward on anything up to fifty thousand dollars before board approval, that means nothing will be done on that project until the following next board meeting. So, and we always bring things to the board and to the board of attention. And I think there's a way that we can say to the board that, hey, it's something that's on this project needs our attention. We, we know before the last minute, we're not saying, oh, my gosh, at the last minute we have, we had to replace a sixty thousand dollar window, for example. And so I would ask the board to, yes, let's think about what that looks like, but, you know, really trust that we, that we're making good decisions, we're going to keep the board informed on everything that we're doing with the project. But the project is very different from the magnitude of the high school project. And I think giving him the authorization up to fifty thousand dollars is a good thing. And I think giving him the authorization up to $50,000 is a good thing, because we're, we're spending significantly less money. We also have, again, we have the BAC that's going to vet these, these project items. They're even at the next meeting, we're thinking about dividing that group up into two working groups, that one is going to prioritize the needs for Monticello, and one group is going to prioritize the needs for Roxboro. So, they're looking at those dollars, we know how much money is going to spend. So, I think, you know, yes, we could probably revisit it, but I think if we, when we go to the next meeting, we're thinking about how that process is going to roll out, what are some of the decisions, some of the items that could become forth, come, come forth to George for approval, what that may look like, so that you can feel more comfortable with what that looks like. Because it may feel a little uncomfortable, because you're like, oh, my gosh, $50,000, what is he going to approve, we're not going to know of? It's not that. I think, once you kind of see those items, and you're going to think, oh, my gosh, we're talking about something that's really minor, that could protect, you know, that could halt the project, and we definitely don't, don't want to do that. But I, I'm glad that we're having this discussion, because we don't want the board to feel uncomfortable about any decision that you have to make. We want to make sure you have all your information, so we're making good decisions. So, I'm glad that we are talking about, and that you shared that you're a little uncomfortable with, with that.
I, refresh me, is it, is it seventy-two hours that we can call a special board meeting with public notice? So, so, we meet every, we have, we meet every two weeks.
Right.
On the books, and, and if something came up, we could call, you know, with seventy-two hours' notice, is, what's the quorum that we would need? Is it three, four?
Yeah, yeah, right.
So.
You could do, but you don't want to.
No, and that's what, you know, but, so, I guess, you know, my comfort level, having had all of these conversations, and I would certainly open it up to hear what, what my colleagues on the board feel. But having had so many conversations, having just gone through two different, larger building projects with the $25,000 cap, and correct me if I'm wrong on that, I think that it was $25,000 before, that, that got us through Wiley and Heights.
No, we actually moved that one. So, remember, yeah, we, we changed it when we had a change in leadership. So, we had someone else managing the project, and then we kind of, we made some changes. So, we made, it was, we made some changes to that. So, we actually was moving back to the process that we had before.
So, we went, so, so we, it had been, it had been.
Sorry.
Please, yes.
Brad, please.
By all means.
But Brad was, remember, Brad took over as managing the project during a time when we needed some change, and he could speak to that. Thank you, Brad.
For the Wiley project, it was $50,000. Then during that interim time between when we had someone else managing the project, the board determined it was a better choice to have $25,000 ceiling on those change orders. But again, to echo what Dr. Dixon said, a lot of the things that the board ended up with larger, larger pieces were impacted by the smaller committee that saw those things long beforehand, and then approved some things after the fact, because the project was where it was at that point. So, it was fifty, twenty-five, and I believe the board voted last month to take it back to fifty.
And was that the same number for the high school, as well as Wiley Enabling?
Wiley Enabling was fifty, the high school was fifty, but in December of 2015, it was reduced to twenty-five. Without board approval.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I think we, if, if there's no other discussion, I, I, I think we should move on and maybe do this. I mean, I think one of the great things that staff has done is formulate the Bond Accountability Commission, okay? And I think that is a big, a big difference in, in not only how that's structured, but how things were done. And I'm very eager to see their work and their product, and mostly the decision-making process. It doesn't have to be a formal board policy. Policy, you know, six, 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 okay? I mean, it could be any, okay, five, 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 whatever. Freudian slip or not, maybe not, who knows? No, I mean, the issue here is, I mean, it's all about process. You know, what is the process? How does it follow?
Yeah.
And that is, that was the big concern that I actually mentioned in the meeting a month ago. Very curious to see how, how that's going to play out. Now, if a decision, I mean, you have a quorum with three, just so everybody knows, there is a National School Board Equity Conference. That I'm going to be attending during our regularly scheduled meeting in February. And this is a meeting where, you know, board members get to meet with elected officials on a national level, they work through policy issues. It's an advocacy and equity conference that I'm going to be attending, so I will not be here for the regular meeting. So, if there's going to be big-ticket items that are going to be coming through, I would like to be aware of that, to know if I either need to come home early. I can't get a flight on the sixth.
Okay.
I can get back on the seventh.
Yeah.
I don't propose changing the meeting.
Okay.
Unless you feel like maybe we should switch the work session with the regular meeting.
Okay.
I'll let you, let the board weigh in on that.
Okay.
I mean, we, we do have a retreat, we can talk about that. I think there's issues with timing regarding the Bond Accountability Commission. I think some decisions do have to be made in February.
Okay.
I would like to be a part of it, but frankly, we've got four qualified people here that can make good decisions.
And I'd, I'd like to engage on the Bond Accountability piece as well.
Okay.
So, I'll plan on attending that.
Can we clarify if the Bond Accountability Committee meeting is on Wednesday, the seventeenth, or Thursday, the eighteenth? I've got two pieces of information, and I don't know which one is right.
It is Wednesday, the seventeenth.
And it's here at six?
Correct.
Thank you. I'll change my calendar.
I feel the need to move on. Talisa added a new policy committee on the list, was something we had talked about.
Correct. And because your, one of your main jobs is policies, and so, and there's a lot of vetting of policies, so we decided that it would be best if we form a committee, and that will be led by Dr. Lombardo, and we have Felicia and some Assistant Super Ed Services and some others on there, Principal, there was a group. And you're looking at our policies, we're vetting those policies, and so, they're going to be meeting starting this month. So, once we know the name of the board representative of that, but that's going to be a very important a committee. So, you'll let me know who's going to serve on?
Well, I think that's something that we can, that we can talk through a little bit and see what's interested. But there's another one I'd like to throw on there.
Okay.
And frankly, in my opinion, is equally as important, and that's a personnel committee.
Okay.
We have evaluations that we have to do for our superintendent and our treasurer, and they need to be done on a timely basis. I think we need to map out a policy and how that gets done.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Brad just sent me a note that, I stand corrected, he just sent me a note that our Bond Accountability Commission said that there would be two members selected by the board president. So, thank you, Brad. So, I misspoke instead of the one, that is two. So, we do need, if you're going to come off and you want two new people, or we want a person added along with you, we can make that decision.
I think I should come off. I mean, I mean, I think, I think I should come off. So, two people that I know are interested?
Yeah. Put me on, please.
Okay.
I'm happy to serve.
Okay, thank you.
Are you, I mean, there's, there's going to be lots of room for committees? I think we need to talk about this.
Yep.
I mean, is there, does anybody else want to throw their hat in the ring for this?
Someone else is happier to serve, I'd be happy not to serve.
That's good, all right. Thank you.
Personnel committee. I'm just throwing that out there, because I think we need to figure out a better process and how the elected board does evaluations for both, both you guys, and how we can get them to you timely, and map that out in advance. So, it's more structured than it is now. So, that's the board report for this evening.
Jim, quick question, when will we decide these committees? At our works, at our retreats?
We're thinking at the retreat.
Okay.
Because the retreat would be such as you will hear from all of our cabinet members on what the work they're doing and all our goals. And then I think we also, we've been reading a book, Effective Board Member Handbook, so you'll get a copy of that, and it talks about the boards focusing their meetings and their work on looking at data and the achievement data. And so, we may decide at that meeting that we want to form some new committees. These committees that we have now, which have, or are good committees, may need to be tweaked, and kind of maybe focus on some of other things that we need to work on. So, I believe that will give us an opportunity to think about some new committees and some new work that we need to focus on. So, I think that would be a great idea, outcome for, from that meeting, to have these selected.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's a.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great thing. So, I guess, as board members, you sort of have a list of what we had? If you have things that you should add or want to think about it, either talk to me, talk to Dr. Dixon. And we'll discuss that. Moving on to any unfinished business.
I read as closely as I could the revised policy 7250, which was approved last month with all of the track changes in it, and there's some major English problems towards the second half. It needs to be printed out clean and then gone through with a red pen. Because I think there's, I can't pull it up right now, but there were, there were places where the English fell apart, and that's just because you can't read the layers.
Seventy-two fifty?
Seventy-two fifty. That was the, the policy on naming places and spaces, yeah.
So, we have a clean copy of that, and I'll put it in your board package on Friday. So, we have the clean copy of that, that policy that was done by Niola.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'll make sure you have it in your package on Friday.
And if there's issues, we could.
I mean, I don't know who's responsible for editing it back into English. But it just like, there's a point where like, wait a minute, what happened here?
Yeah, we'll send it to Paul, Dr. Paul Lombardi. Lombardi does that. But I'll send you the copy, I think you'll be pleased with the updated copy.
Any other unfinished business? New business?
Jim, I know at one point there was, the, the district was working on a communications policy, a strategic communications policy, and I don't know where that ever landed, but it's something that I would like to, if it's still out there, I'd like it to be a new business where we take a look at that, or review it, or see it. I'm not sure what ever happened with that.
So, what we were working on is not a communication policy, but a communications plan.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're going to talk about that at the board retreat.
Okay.
But what we did, we partnered with a organization, M2 Communications, and we had them to work with Scott and to work with our principals, and during our administrative retreat this fall, just kind of worked with the principals on how we communicate with the message, so that we have the same message from all buildings across the district. And so, we had an obsession on that. And now, and that person also worked with Scott in our office on some, some timeline things that we should communicate, and fortunately, we have a great communications person, but that is doing a great job. But we also wanted an additional layer, because the board did ask for a communications plan, so we, we're going to talk about that at the retreat.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure that it didn't somewhere fall off from the past.
Nope, nope.
Good, okay, thank you.
So, in your evaluation documents, you had a nice document. Can we just be sure to have that available to everybody? I think that would be beneficial, everybody sees that. Other business?
I attended an all-day training today on equity in the district, and it was excellent and pretty intense, and there's way more stuff than can be packed into a seven-hour day, Dr. Womack. And so, I'm happy to see that, how that works its way, trickles down, if trickle-down's the right metaphor, through our administration and staff. I mean, I don't know yet, but it, I think the outcome has the potential to be incredibly powerful for the district and for our students.
Thank you, thank you. And what she's speaking to today, Dr. Womack and others held a equity training for community members and board members who wanted to go. And you know, we put that as far as our strategic plan go to education opportunities, and the school board did adopt a equity policy. And along with that, the union also partnered with us, and we have equity training as a part of our essential training for all of our staff members. So, we're doing some good work, thank you, Dr. Womack and the team, doing some great work. And we're going to talk about a little bit of that next Saturday as well, because I think the board members should be, should participate in that training as well. It's powerful training, it pulls at you, you may leave crying and laughing, and I don't know if you had some tense moments, but I think it really brings to light a lot of our feelings and beliefs. But I think it's important because of the students that we serve. When we think about our population, our student body is 75% African-Americans, and I think it's important for us to know the history of our students and where they come from, and, and know more about them and the community that we serve. So, I applaud the work that we're doing, I applaud the board for the commitment to the equity work. I know Sandy and Allison are actually attending the M-SAND, you know, we're part of the Minority Student Achievement Network, and there's an upcoming meeting in which they're going to go and bring back some more PD, I'm hoping, and some data, and some learning that they're going to get from those, from those meetings. And, and I serve on executive board, so I would be there too. So, we get a lot of good work from Minority Student Team and Network, and glad that they extended that to our community, and I work with Sandy on the opportunity for, I know at the board retreat, it can't happen, because it's all day, and if you ever heard Dr. Womack speak, it's going to take.
And it's more than a day's work.
It's more than a day's work. But I think I like the pairing with, with Dr. Womack along with Allison Burr, because Allison has a way of bringing that data, and she's been working with M-SAND in quite a while too, as a RPC member. And with, with Sandy along with her, we're getting some, some great information from.
One thought, and this is not in any way a directive, but I don't know where the line falls between equity training and anti-racism training. And, you know, that's sort of a, a more specialized approach to things, but there were so many points of commonality, and we spoke about commonality at great length, and so it's just something to think about, like, are there specific things that we could appropriate from that model for, for the district?
Okay. Yeah, that's good. Good, thank you. Glad you attended. Yeah, it's good.
Yeah, I was late picking up my daughter from cello lesson, but that's okay.
But you said there will be other opportunities to attend that?
Oh, yes, and there was a first time, and, and there are going to be some other, I see Felicia nodding her head, there's going to be some other trainings, and, and we plan, the goal is for everyone in the district to, to go through the training. And we were looking even, Dr. Thea Ford from John Carroll University has offered the opportunity for maybe that we need to partner with John Carroll and have it as a course. But, you know, you know, when you're talking about equity and equity training, you have to be very sensitive, because some people, you know, tell, oh, my gosh, is something do I have to take, or must take? And we want to make sure that it's, it's inviting, and so that people are not coming and think that we're going to now make you this or make you that. We, it's an awareness, and being aware, a self-awareness, and then being more aware about the students that we serve and their background and where they're coming from. And I think that's, that's important. And again, and the commitment that we make to that.
So, one of the things that our equity policy states is, I believe, an annual report back to the board.
Correct. I think we have that, and we're going to review that as we, in our agenda planning meetings, but I think we have it on schedule for either the February or the March work sessions, and that's when the committee will come back, and we have an equity analysis tool, and they're going to come back and report out on that. I think it's February and March, I can't remember which month that it's, that is scheduled.
Then in the test course, we could work session. Then in the test course, we could work sessions.
Yes.
And when we hear about the kids who have been a part of options, when they, global ambassadors.
Oh.
Which regrettably is not happening this year.
This year, yes, but you know, there's always next year.
There's always next year.
Yes.
Um, any other?
You were gonna talk about?
Oh, there's announcements.
Very good.
Any other announcements? Or any other things? Um, board committee reports, I think we exhausted that when we were, President's Report. Um, correspondence and announcements. So we have our Bond Accountability Meeting on the seventeenth at six o'clock. We have a retreat pretty much all day on the twentieth, Saturday the twentieth. Um, there's a work session on the twenty-third, and I think the next.
You know the topic for the work session?
No.
Okay, the work session is, is the top of the hill.
Okay.
Yeah. So it will be the um, city joining us along with their staff and our staff. So that's the topic.
And that's not like you're building a little hill and we're gonna fight on the top?
No, no, it's the top of the hill development project, yeah. We're going to um, talk about that with the city.
And I assume there will be lots of paperwork showing up in advance of that?
Yes, yeah, and we have David Seed, who is going to join us um, as well. So it'll be a lot of information, a lot of questions for, you know, we know you're gonna have, and we want to be able to answer all your, your questions, so.
Okay, and again, that's the twenty-third.
Correct.
So one of the uh, council members that was here this morning, I ran into at the Stone Oven this morning, and he was all excited because apparently they had just received the um, performance for the top of the hill development project. They're very excited, uh, says, well, tell me more, says, well, I think we can, but, so I think, I'm anxious to see all of the, the packets of information, to see
Yeah.
what the impact is gonna be and how we can develop those
Right.
properties and
Yes.
and hopefully um, make some money off of it.
Yeah, I think the developer will be in attendance as well.
Yes, correct. The developer will be there, yes.
Good, good.
Good, thank you, Scott, you're right.
Um, the other um, I think announcement is the Superintendent's Fight Back, the Democrat, Democracy in Education series that you mentioned in your report. Um, Jim Lloyd is one of the speakers. Uh, Jim Lloyd is a conservative Republican superintendent who is so angered by the um, way that his party deals with um, state funding generally, and has a lot of very strong words. He's absolutely a treat to enjoy. I'm really looking forward to going out and listening to this, so I, hopefully other people.
And the weekend before that, is the OSBA Conference in Independence, is that correct?
That is a new school board member.
Okay, what is the procedure for
Registration.
Registration? So that we can go?
Yeah, just, just contact Caroline, and she'll get you out.
Okay.
So there is um, a couple of new board uh, sessions on how to be effective, uh, how to be an effective new board member. Um, I hear that there's one for board presidents, I'm gonna seek that out, and this is not my intent, but I am grateful to be here and
That's good.
learn how to run a meeting.
Yeah. Could I, could I talk a little bit more about the, uh, so um, those of us in the room may be very familiar with the really important organization, the Heights Coalition for Public Education. Um, but there are many people who watch these meetings at home, having been one myself many times. And if, if people are not familiar, not following the Heights Coalition for Public Education on Facebook, I cannot recommend that highly enough. This is an organization that um, has been around for a couple of years now, and it has a wide variety of people attending the meetings, um, administration, uh, members of the, the different, um, the, the teachers' union, um, members of the community, members, um, people attend who actually no longer live in the community, but who love this community and our public schools so much that they continue to attend. So, um, if you're sitting at home, uh, watching Friend, the Heights Coalition for Public Education, there are three important presentations that are on the calendar. There's the one that Jim spoke about on January twenty-ninth with superintendents. On February twelfth, there is another one, the Vision for Public Education. And on February twenty-sixth, we are having, holding a strategy session with a number of the folks from Columbus, our great representatives who represent this area, um, Janine Boyd and Kent Smith. We have State School Board Member Merrill Johnson will be attending, as well as a member of the um, Ohio Federation of Teachers Legislative, their Legislative Director. So we are, um, we should be very proud and support these very, very local efforts to actually affect a change for the better for our community and for our students. So, that's my, my rather long-winded commercial for Heights Coalition for Public Education.
That's good.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, um, I put into Ohio Revised Code, section one, two, one, dot, twenty-two, G1, I need a motion for the board to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, demotion, or compensation of an employee or official of the school district.
So moved.
Second.
Do I have a second? We will immediately adj- adjourn this meeting afterwards. Oh, we need a vote? We need a vote? Yes. Mr. Lu- or Ms. Lewis, sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Right? Ms. Rini?
Yes.